The August 9th. The August 9th, 2021 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board will come to order. At this time, Chair recognizes Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation. You may remain seated if you wish.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we are grateful together in this planning board meeting this evening to discuss the requests for changes in county planning, and we pray that thou will bless us to know what thy will is. Bless those who considered the topics, people who have provided these, the documentation that we need, and those who will be speaking and presenting, that we might all know and come to understand what we need to do on behalf of the Rockingham County. And we're grateful for the opportunity to help in this county government. And as we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
The record showed that a quorum of five members present. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve adopting the agenda.
So move.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the agenda is adopted. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for May 10th and June 14th. A separate motion for each set of minutes will be required.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 10th.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes for the May 10th meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. Again, there being no opposition, the minutes are approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 14th meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes for the June 14th meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, like sign. Again, no opposition, so the minutes for June 14th are also approved. There are four cases on the agenda tonight requesting a rezoning. The following are the guidelines for speakers. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the Rockingham County Planning Board must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Additionally, each speaker will be called by the Chairman. When recognized, each speaker must approach the podium and will be asked to state their name and address before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the Board Chairman. Each case will be presented by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the Board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, to those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the Board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. Chair now calls upon staff to present our first case, zoning map amendment request 2021-16.
I'm going to bring this down. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Tonight, so much nicer than last time. It was so raucous. Nice and quiet tonight. Okay, good. Just to start with, this is case 2021-16. I received two phone calls, both of which were just inquiries by nature, neither for nor against, just wanted some more information. This is an unconditional request for rezoning from residential agricultural to residential protected. There is the tax pin denoting the parcel. The address is on Newham Road in Stokesdale, New Bethel Township, unconditional and/or straight rezoning. There is one thing I would like to correct. In the staff report, number two utilities, this parcel will be served by public water and public sewer, and I indicated private septic facilities. That was a typographical error. This is a vicinity map showing the general location of the parcel in relation to the cities and counties in the area. This is in the southwestern quadrant of the county where we have a lot of development pressure going on right now, so not surprising. This parcel is about 18 acres. Currently zoned residential agricultural. It's surrounded by a mix of uses. This is a very sort of busy area in the county. As you can see from this map, the highlighted parcel next to some industrial zone parcels, some that are zoned highway commercial, there's some residential mixed in the area, some residential protected, and of course, lots of residential agricultural, as might be the case. The next map is a simple map of the water features and aerial features in the area. This is nowhere near any delineated stream or floodplain, so when it comes to development, that should not be an issue. And the last map here is from the current land use plan. This is in the G3 corridor, which is our highest intensity allocation for land use mix. Generally, the category is entitled G3 mixed use. Mixed use meaning mixed housing types and also meaning incorporating commercial and other uses where it's appropriate. The RP zoning class, residential protected, is primarily created and indicated and will remain so in the new ordinance for detached, single-family housing, which is the primary use in the RP district. It is often associated with major subdivision development. I won't read through everything else that I wrote. Just note, this is, there will be discussions about a planned use for the property, but this is unconditional, so keep that in mind when considering approval. It's slightly on the transition area of G2, which really doesn't impact the use indications much at all in this case. G3 is targeted for mixed-use centers and growth corridors. This is the core of the boundary strategic growth area. G3 encourages a variety of housing types and densities, including the types listed here. The residential mixed zone is actually prioritized in G3. The residential protected is appropriate in transitional areas. I'm going to look to see if there was anything else I would say about this case in specific. I don't accept that staff recommends approval of the request after evaluating all the aspects of the application. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cochran?
Is there a specific map you might like me to leave it on, the zoning or the land use plan?
When you have it on, we'll be fine.
Zoning, okay.
That's good.
Very good.
Is this an honor?
Here?
Yes, sir.
Would you please come out to the podium? And for the record, would you please state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Bill Arndt. Our group, Maxon Incorporated, is out of Salisbury, North Carolina, 434 Calhoun Street.
Would you like the planning board to know about your application?
Just the overall development and improvements to Rockingham County, really. I mean, it's, to our group, it's a pretty straightforward, good deal for this area. It's received a lot of interest from larger builder groups, which we have talked to three or four. We haven't 100% decided, but we've done a lot of work in the background to make sure that, that what we do bring to Rockingham County is much better than where it started, just from an aesthetic perspective. So we've, we're pretty proud of this community. We hope to see it move forward.
Is this pretty much the essence of?
Yes, sir. The cover picture of that is actually on y'all's website, and...
I didn't think it was the housing.
Well, no, the, just the water tower and just to the right of that is actually the property that we're talking about, so I thought that was kind of interesting.
Are there any questions for Mr. Arndt?
How big are lot sizes, or are you anticipating?
Our lot sizes are a little bit smaller, but if you look at the, they'll be under three-quarters of an acre, but the house sizes will be 55, or I mean, I'm sorry, 45 wide by 65 deep. Of course, we'll have mail kiosks, and we're going to try to do some little pockets in there for people to gather and that kind of thing.
Complimentary.
Yes, yeah. It sets up well for some of those types of things.
I should make a quick note here that Mr. Maxon and I had discussed both the current unified development ordinance and the proposed development ordinance and the provisions of each. Since he is applying sort of in an in-between timeframe, he will be eligible for permit choice should this case be recommended for and receive approval. So I just wanted the Board to know that.
You may want to go with the new version. A lot of restrictions have been lifted out of it. Any further questions for Mr. Arndt, the Board? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There is no one else signed up to speak about this case. So at this point, the Chair will entertain a motion. In your motion packet, please notice that there's approval that's consistent with the land use plan and approval that's inconsistent, and I believe we need the one that's consistent with.
I'll go ahead. I propose a motion. After considering Rockingham County's adopted comprehensive plans, the Rockingham County Planning Board recommends approval of case 2021-16. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The zoning amendments supports the intent and description of the G3 land class. The permitted use in the residential protected district are compatible with the character of the existing developments on adjacent parcels and in the neighborhood, and the proposed rezoning conforms to the guidelines, goals, and requirements of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, G3 land class, and future land use map. The Board considers its action adopting the proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because the size of the parcel is appropriate for residential protected district. The proposed uses allowed in the district are appropriate for the land, considering its effect upon the home, landowners, neighbors, and community. And the property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural and light industrial. Nearby parcels are zoned residential protected, residential mixed, and highway commercial. Current uses in the area match or end or are similar to those permissible in the proposed zoning district. On balance, the following factors: one, the size of the tract in question; two, the compatibility of the zoning action with the comprehensive plan; and three, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors and surrounding community; and four, the relationship between envisioned permitted use and the uses currently present in adjacent tracts weigh in favor of approving the proposed zoning amendment.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for case number 2021-16. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the application is approved. Our next case, zoning request 2021-18, Williamsburg Township. Staff will now give us the details on the case.
Here we go. Case 2021-18 is a request, again, for an unconditional zoning reclassification, a request for rezoning from residential protected to residential agricultural. It's a slight downzoning. Tax pin here, 3622 North Carolina Highway 150 in Reedsville Township. It's Williamsburg. This parcel will be served by individual well and septic wastewater disposal. Of note, the residence located on this parcel was subject to a fire, which essentially destroyed it recently. And the reason for the request for rezoning is so that the folks who currently own the parcel have an expanded choice of housing options. This zone, this parcel is, as you can see, located on the far eastern side of the county. It's essentially surrounded by agricultural parcels, except for this small strip of RP and this one industrial use that I sort of looked into to try to find out exactly what it is, but I was not able to, given the timeframe that I had. You will notice a little parcel there zoned community shopping, and that is actually accurate zoning from many, many, many years ago. It was rezoned to community shopping in the very early 1990s, well before I was and planned on being a planner person. But that is accurate. Water features in the area, aerial features, which is almost identical to the land use map. This is in the O2 district, rural land class. Parcels in this area are designated mostly for zoning as residential agricultural and the associated uses. There is a little bit of a mix of zoning in this area, but as you can see, the predominant zoning is residential agricultural. And after we looked at all the factors, the staff recommends approval of this. This land class is characterized by low to very low density residential and agricultural uses, undeveloped and forested lands, should generally be zoned residential, agricultural, and again, the request is an unconditional request. I spoke with the Mr. and Mrs. Collins and let them know that they would not have to speak this evening, that this was a straight rezoning request, and that most of the facts should be available to the Board for consideration. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Could you go back to the maps?
Sure.
That one right there.
Oh, sorry.
Just to satisfy my curiosity, what are those above the hatchmark property that appear to be a whole bunch of little buildings?
That, I believe, is, I looked at that on the map, and I'm sorry, I wish I had the capability to zoom in on here. Hang on one second, I'm going to get my paper map.
On Google Maps, it's, it's blossoming pear trees.
It's, it's a farming operation of some sort. I looked at it, but I couldn't remember exactly what, and you're right.
The question, there are trees.
They're, they're pear.
Blooming Bradford pears. I've noticed that in other photographs. This is 2019 photography, the aerial photography, and the time of year they took it, which must have been March or maybe late February, everywhere you look, just about, if you zoom in close enough, you're going to see white blooming pear trees, because they're, they're everywhere now. But there is, I believe there's also a farm use on that, on that parcel that's right behind there.
So we have an outlawed pear trees like South Carolina has?
No, and they aren't invasive species up here. They're even worse down there.
Just double checking.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran? Thank you, Lynn. This appears to be just what it is, a straight rezoning, so if someone would like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Chair recognizes James Fink.
Review the case 2021-18 rezoning to residential agricultural map amendment and adopts the following statements as required by NCGS 160D. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans, the Rockingham County Planning Board recommends approval. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The zoning amendment supports the intent and descriptions of the O2 rural land class. A, the permitted uses in the residential agricultural district are compatible with the character and existing developments on adjacent parcels and in the neighborhood. And B, the proposed rezoning conforms to the guidelines, goals, and requirements of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, O2 rural land class, and future land map. Number two, the Board considers its action adopting the proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because the size of the parcel is appropriate for residential agricultural. The proposed use allows in the district are appropriate for the land, considering its effect upon the landowners, neighbors, and community. And the property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural, residential protected, and community shopping. Current uses in this area match those permissible in the proposed zoning district. On balance, excuse me, on balance of following factors: one, the size of the tract in question; number two, the compatibility of the zoning action with the comprehensive plan; number three, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors and the surrounding community; and four, the relationship between envisioned permitted use and the uses currently present in adjacent tracts weigh in favor of approving the proposed zoning amendment.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the application for rezoning from residential protected to Staff will now present our next case. Where is the number? 2021-19.
Very good. I did mean to mention that we had two inquiry calls on 2021-18. Here, and, okay, and received approval tonight. Remember that this is a recommendation for approval. It goes to Board of Commissioners on September 20th. Okay, so 2021-19. It's a request for rezoning from residential agricultural to neighborhood commercial conditional district. This is a conditional rezoning that is very specific. I spoke with the applicant. This parcel has a history in the area of being used for commercial purposes, and at one point in the past, they were permitted non-conformances. They were allowed to continue as long as the use did not change, but the use did change for a period of time, and this has been operating as a small engine repair shop, but is of course not allowed to do so in the RA district. So the applicant would like to have it rezoned with the conditions that he agreed to for a small engine repair shop, accessory uses, and perhaps a sign out front. Here's the tax pin. It's located at 2937 Price Road in Eden in the Leaksville. Ignore that where I said unconditional, because it's not, it's conditional, as I said up here. Sorry about that, that was a copy-paste error. Mr. Wilson is the applicant. These are the three uses specifically that are being requested for. This is in the current ordinance, use 59 in the neighborhood commercial zoning district, service establishments, including but not limited to barber shops, beauty shops, small item repair and rental. This would include other things, too, that might not fall into a specific category in the ordinance or someone to apply for it. A sign as permitted and accessory uses as related to the primary use, which restricts it very significantly, because the applicant understands that no other use will be allowed in this district without coming back for a rezoning or request change. It was decided, it was decided to pursue it in this fashion to minimize concerns of neighbors about potential future uses that might not necessarily be compatible with neighborhood as it is. And most of the area there is, and I have been told this by multiple sources, is familiar with this parcel and this activity going on on this parcel. And it's frequented by a lot of folks who live in that area of the county to get their small engines repaired on their ATVs, their lawn mowers, et cetera. We had three inquiry calls about this one. It is located not terribly far outside of the Eden area on Price Road Road. Nearby parcels are primarily zoned residential agricultural, but there's some residential mixed and residential protected in there also. There's a small light industrial parcel up here, too. Some of these light industrials, I think, are really old zonings, and I don't know if they're even still in use or not, but I see them quite a bit, and I try to investigate to figure out what they are if I can. Next is just the aerial map and water features, which don't really apply to this parcel here. And next is the future land use map. This parcel is located not a far distance away from what has been identified as a neighborhood node for clustered commercial development, which makes it more suitable for rezoning at this location. It's not right in the node, but it's, it's pretty close to the node, it's less than three-quarters of a mile away from it. The G1 low-density growth land use class. This class is characterized by low-density residential and limited commercial development nodes located at crossroads. This particular parcel is three-quarters of a mile northwest of a targeted commercial node at the intersection of Price Road and Price Grange Road. Areas located within the G1 land class are rural but are located near these strategic intersections where neighborhood commercial could be appropriate. That's from page 48. There was anything else specific to this parcel that I needed to let you know? And of course, for the use, should it be approved by Board of Commissioners on recommendation? The applicant would acquire the necessary standard zoning and building permits that would be associated with establishing this as a legitimate business in the district.
Question. You said that the small engine repair business has been operating on this property. Is the applicant looking to maintain the business in the building that exists or build a new building, or?
He plans on maintaining the business in the structure that currently exists. Yeah, there won't be any, at present, there are no new structures planned.
How long the business has been in existence?
I don't know exactly how long, and I don't know if Mr. Wilson is here tonight. I told him that he wouldn't have to attend. He was really nervous about actually having to speak, so I told him that he wouldn't have to if he didn't, didn't want to. It has been for at least a year and maybe longer. I believe this is the primary living means of the applicant. This is his, his primary livelihood. It was brought to our attention, there were some potential violations, quote unquote, code violations, and the main one was the use of the property as a, for commercial purposes, being in the RA district, and this was part of the solution.
Right.
Okay. Before that, though, I will say, I've heard several things from the neighbors and from folks who've lived in the county for a long time, that at one point, it was a quote-unquote beer joint. So at some point, it was a bar for a while, I think. I want to say it was maybe a bike shop for a while, and I mean like a motorbike shop. It's been some other things, too, people have said in the past over the years. It's been some other things, too, people have said in the past over the years, but since we have these zoning districts these days, you know, we have to try to make it match up.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Chair recognizes Cindy Hayworth.
Yes, you said you had three calls of inquiry. Is it just because they've seen the sign out there? And also, have there been complaints against this property prior to prior to whom kind to have it zoned?
The phone calls were all from neighbors who received notification letters. They all stated as such when they phoned me, and they all noted that they simply wanted more information. They didn't voice any strong feelings for or against. And I didn't get the feeling at the end of the call and wasn't told that I am for or against this rezoning. The only complaint that we got was about the activity that was going on at the time, and code enforcement checked it out. And we explained to the gentleman, Mr. Wilson, that since this is residentially zoned, that this wasn't permitted there. And we gave him options for mitigation, one of which included requesting rezoning. The other option would be, you know, cessation of the business and moving it elsewhere, et cetera. And since I think this is his primary livelihood, he asked for the rezoning. And after discussing it with him and looking at the land use plan and the other uses in the area at first glance in our discussion, I felt like it was probably appropriate. And upon research and preparing the site plan, excuse me, the staff report, I definitely feel like it's appropriate for the area and wouldn't be an impairment to any of the local uses.
Perfect questions. Thank you. You're vibrating up there. Motion.
Mr. Chair, the Planning Board has reviewed case 2021-19, rezoning to Neighborhood Commercial Conditional District map amendment, and adopts the following statement. It's as required by North Carolina General Statute, it's 160D. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans, the Rockingham County Planning Board recommends approval of case number 2021-19. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This zoning amendment supports the intent and descriptions of the G1 low-density growth land class. The permitted use, small engine repair shop in the Neighborhood Commercial Conditional District is compatible with the character of existing developments on adjacent parcels and in the neighborhood. And the proposed rezoning conforms to the guidelines, goals, and requirements of Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan G1 Low Density Growth Land Class and Future Land Use Map. The board considers its actions in adopting the proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because the size of the parcel is appropriate for the Neighborhood Commercial Conditional District, and the proposed small business, small engine repair shop used allowed in the district is appropriate for the parcel, considering its effect upon the landowners, neighbors, and community, and the property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural and residential mixed. Current uses in the area are compatible with the proposed use in the proposed conditional zoning district. On the balance of the following factors: one, the size of the tract in question; two, the compatibility of the zoning action with the comprehensive plan; three, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors, and the surrounding community; and four, the relationship between the envisioned permitted use and the uses currently present in adjacent tracts weigh in favor of approving the proposed zoning amendment.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for case number 2021-19, located at 2937 Price Road. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition. The Planning Board recommends approval of the application. Staff will now present our last case scheduled for this evening. My pages are stuck together. Come on. Here we go. Case number 2021-20.
Thank you. This is our last case for the night, case 2021-20. Say that fast three times. This request is for rezoning from residential agricultural to residential mixed. This, again, is a case that was discussed as falling on the timeline between ordinances and with the schedule that we're on currently for adopting the ordinance. The applicant will have permit choice. He is envisioning uses under the residential mixed zoning category in the new UDO as opposed to the current UDO. In the new UDO, just a brief sort of understanding, the residential mixed zoning district is actually structured, as it sounds, to be a zoning district that contains mixed types of housing, where in the past, it was sort of a catch-all category for mobile home parks and could be used for other developments and housing types, in fact, but really never was. With that in mind, this area is located just outside of the Mayodan ETJ, just off of Highway 220. It's about 47 acres. This parcel will be served by public water, and there I go again. Public water and public sewer, not private. I'm sorry about my type of there, guys. Do the copies that you have say private or public? Private, okay. That was my mistake on both of those. I apologize. It is public sewer. Again, I mentioned here about the permit choice. The address of this is 685 River Road in Stoneville in the Mayo Township. This, again, is a request for an unconditional rezoning. Here is an indicator of the location. As you can see, it's just outside of that little extra portion of Mayodan zoning there in their ETJ, quite close to 220. Nearby zoning is a mix of quite a few things. Quite a bit of residential agricultural, but we also have quite a bit of heavy industry, highway commercial, and you also have a lot of mixed zoning districts in and around Madison and Mayodan there to the west that you can see on the edge of this, and also to the north. Also, you can see there its proximity to 220. It's just an aerial features map that shows you the wrong parcel. That's the Ferguson and Villarreal parcel, and I don't know what happened there. There we go. Those are extra, just for your entertainment. Those are from our last hearing, just so you know. I have too much to do, y'all. I really do. I have too much. This is the aerial and water features map, which is pretty boring. There's nothing there. And lastly, the land use, future land use map. This parcel is also located in the G3 land use class. And G3 is where, as I mentioned before, residential mixed is prioritized as residential zoning class. My goodness, okay. Okay, I won't say anything else. I'll just read my slide. Targeted for mixed-use centers and growth corridors, the core of the county's strategic growth area. G3 Goal 4 encourages a variety of housing types, and the G3 land class prioritizes residential mixed zoning. The applicant is here, Mr. Rexstraw, and will be happy to answer any questions, I'm sure. I will, before then, be able and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran?
I have a question.
Chair recognizes Corey Scott.
Just a case in point. I looked up the tax pin number.
I made an error in this one, too, I believe.
So it's, yeah, 6841, okay.
Yeah, that's my fault.
Thank you.
Yeah, somebody else brought that to my attention. Yeah, and I forgot to mention that, too. It's again, because there's just me, and I need an editor. I need an assistant. I need a director. I apologize.
Not to worry.
In the permanent record, it shall be corrected. Thank you, sir. Again, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay.
Mr. Rexstraw.
How are you this evening? Mr. Chair and the Planning Board appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. My name is Charles Rexstraw, reside at 290 Twin Creeks Drive, Stokesdale. We own the 48 acre, excuse me, 47 acres referenced at 685 River Road. Our desire is to develop the 47 acres into a residential mixed use. Quick background to the rear of our property is a sewer lift station. Recently, in the last six months, the county has installed a 12-inch water line along our property, along River Road. Both the water line and sewer line are controlled by the town of Mayodan. I do have an agreement with the town of Mayodan to use their water and sewer. And as Lynn said, our parcel falls along the Highway 220, I-73 mixed-use corridor. It's just within a quarter mile of Highway 220. Be glad to take any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Rexstraw? Do you have an idea how many residences will be on this property, just roughly?
Roughly right around 95 to 100.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Rexstraw?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Chair recognizes Cindy Hayworth.
The Planning Board has reviewed case 2021-20, rezoning to residential mixed, and adopts the following statements as required by NCGS 160D. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans, the Rockingham County Planning Board recommends approval of case 2021-20. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The zoning amendment is supported by the intent and descriptions of the G3 land class. The permitted uses in residential mixed district are compatible with the character of existing developments on adjacent parcels and in the neighborhood. And the proposed rezoning conforms to the guidelines, goals, and requirements of the Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan G3 land class and future land use map. The board considers its action in adopting the proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because the size of the parcel is appropriate for the residential mixed district. The proposed uses allowed in the district are appropriate for the land, considering its effect upon the landowners, neighbors, and community. The property for the request abuts properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural and residential protected. Nearby parcels are zoned for a mix of residential agricultural, commercial, and industrial uses. The residential mixed rezoning is not discordant with the zoning characteristics of the area. On balance, the following factors: number one, the size of the tract in question; number two, the compatibility of the zoning action with the comprehensive plan; number three, the benefits and detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors, and the surrounding community; and four, the relationship between the envisioned permitted use and uses currently present in adjacent tracts weigh in favor of approving the proposed zoning amendment.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition. The application is approved. For recommendation to the county commissioners, that they also approve it. Thank you all for coming. The next item on our agenda under new businesses is to review, consider, and provide comment and make recommendations on the comprehensively revised Rockingham County Unified Development Ordinance. The commissioners will continue the public hearing on this matter on August 16, 2021. Now, before we do anything here, let me state that our normal procedure is to hear zoning, special use permits requests, and variance requests. And our procedure calls for us to discuss these requests before we vote. However, for this item, we're going to return to the normal protocol under parliamentary procedure, which calls for a motion and a second to precede a discussion before a vote is taken. As chairman, I therefore move that the revised Unified Development Ordinance that has been distributed to you receive a recommendation from the Planning Board to the county commissioners that they adopt what we have so far, subject to further revisions for formatting, grammatical errors, lack of citations in certain areas, plugging in general statutes, that kind of thing, and some other minor language changes, text amendments that are forthcoming. Second. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to recommend to the county commissioners that the Unified Development Ordinance as currently revised be adopted. The floor is now open for discussion. Yes, by all means.
Just wanted to, I just prepared one slide about the dates. Many of you are familiar with what this process has been, the development of this, especially Paul, who's been instrumental. There will be another meeting of the advisory committee to the UDO to review and edit based on changes made between the last meeting and then, which might include anything recommended or commented on by members of the board. The Board of Commissioners hearing to adopt the ordinance is next Monday, August 16, at 6:30. What I sent you was marked up with lots of different colors and things with new language and deletion of old language or language that needed to be clarified or corrected. Any of you who have particularly looked at the document and did not fall asleep while you were reading it are welcome to send me, thanks for giggling, Paul, send me an email, please. Email me with any suggestions, anything that you catch or anything that you might be a good idea, and I'll be glad to take a look at those, and I'll be glad to present it to the advisory committee for review. Since I sent the last copy to you, I have had a chance to go through the remainder of the permitted uses with development standards or requiring a special use permit. That would be from manufactured home park through wireless communication facility. Fixed a couple of errors, updated a little bit of language, put in necessary citations and things like that. Much of that has not changed from the prior ordinance. There are new uses in there, of course, but those that were included in the prior ordinance and will be carried over have really changed very little. The advisory committee, at their last meeting, suggested some changes to the design and development standards for non-residential districts, which was marked up in the copy that was sent to you. I have also had a chance to briefly review the overlay ordinance section, which includes the watersheds, floodplain management, the airport hazard, and the voluntary farmland overlay district in addition to the Jordan Lake riparian buffer ordinance. And for the most part, those ordinances aren't changing very much either, except that we are adopting, there's a new state suggested model ordinance for water- for watersheds, drinking water watersheds, and the protection of those that has been adopted for this ordinance, which is a bit of a language change from the ordinance that we have in place now, but not in a really significant way. It actually just clarifies, it streamlines things and makes things a little bit clearer. But that will be presented to the Board. And I've added the necessary legal citations in there where there were some blanks and gaps and things like that. Once the Board of Commissioners votes on adopting this, this will go back to a consulting firm, I haven't decided which one yet, but a consulting firm, to quote-unquote "make it pretty," as I call it. To get it formatted, to get links established online and within the document so that folks can browse it and click a link to jump straight to the item that they might be looking for by title. Those things will be handled by the consulting firm. And most likely, there will be, within 30 to 60 days after the 16th, a round of text amendments that comes back before you, which is to add or remove or change language regarding something that turns out doesn't work so well, or oops, we missed this one, or any sort of, any number of other changes. And that's very common when adopting a new ordinance. A new ordinance is a beastly undertaking. And this one was way overdue for the county, so. Anyway, that's enough of me. But if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any.
Does the Chair have a question?
I'd like to add further that, excuse me, Cindy, before I recognize you. I would also like to add that as a member of the Subcommittee, the meetings that we have had have, they've been long. And they've been a line-by-line examination of everything that's written in this UDO. And it's almost impossible, in a half a dozen meetings, to ferret out, correct, and revise every single thing that needs to be done. I think what's important now is by recommending approval of what we have so far to the county commissioners, we're taking the first step in getting this ordinance in use. Because right now, we're at an intersection where we have an overlap between our old ordinance and the new ordinance. And I think it's important to get this thing rolling as soon as we can. The Chair recognizes Cindy Hayworth.
Lynn, I just wanted to ask, when, did you say you adopted the Jordan Lake rules for the county? Is that what you, what? I know that there, I know that increases a lot of the buffer and it gets, the counties get to the point where it starts affecting construction because the rules are so strict, as they should be. And how, how much did that change, if I understood what you said?
So the current ordinance and the ordinance before it already incorporated the Jordan Lake rules that were in effect at the time. And the Jordan Lake rules here in our area of Rockingham County roughly parallel the Troublesome Creek watershed and, to some degree, the Hall. We only have a small portion of the Hall River watershed in our district. And as it applies to development in Rockingham County, the Jordan Lake overlay really only applies to riparian buffers along intermittent and perennial streams and any water bodies. That requires a 100-foot riparian buffer. That would be 50 feet on each side of a stream or creek or natural water body. The density limitations and things like that that are applicable in other areas of the state as part of the Jordan overlay do not apply to us. However, I don't want to call it by coincidence because the Troublesome Creek watershed and the Hall River watershed are both subwatersheds of the Jordan Lake, which is actually Jordan reservoir. And the Jordan reservoir is in itself a subwatershed of the Cape Fear River Basin, which is the larger river basin that runs from the mountains all the way to the coast. So in the watershed for Troublesome Creek and the Hall River, they do have density limitations that do apply. So there's some overlap. But when we're talking about the rules of the Jordan ordinance per se, they really only have to do with riparian buffers here. If that clarifies your question.
It does. Thank you.
And essentially, there is no change to those rules from the old ordinance to the new.
Any other questions for Mr. Cochran? Any further discussion of the UDO? The Chair recognizes Cory Scott.
One thing I noticed in several places where you talk about posting the notifications and stuff like that.
Yes.
It doesn't, it didn't seem to refer to like the county website and stuff like that. Are there, is there language that could be in there that, that those notifications and stuff would be in the appropriate county internet services or something to that effect? So that it would be, it would be identifiable? Somebody could go to Rockingham County website and see any notifications and stuff like that? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't specifically, it doesn't take advantage of that. And I'm, and considering everybody's using their phones and their tablets and stuff, that would be a logical place to want to post any kind of notifications and stuff like that.
Sure, that makes perfect sense. And that's been discussed in the past. The website that we have now is much more amenable to that kind of thing and adaptable. I will say that there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. And that's something that I think is a great idea. It's just one more way of getting notice out there. The requirements that are listed in the ordinance are adherence to the state statute and what the state statute says, which has to do with the number of days before, you know, minimum and maximum, who you have to mail cards to. You have to publish a newspaper notice for this one, but not for that one. A sign gets posted for all of them. So when it comes to inclusion in the ordinance, we, we didn't want to include language that would make it any more restrictive or difficult than it has to be. We already actually go an extra step with Planning Board notifications for rezonings. The state statute only requires notice mailings to adjoining property holders. But we mailed to a 1,000-foot perimeter, 1,000-foot radius. That's something that the commissioners wanted so that it shows more of an effort to make sure that as many people, within reason, know about what might be happening on a given parcel anywhere. But I don't, I don't think necessarily we should codify it in the ordinance. But I think it's absolutely a fantastic idea to make sure that when these notices go out, that something goes up on the website. I will say, right now, this packet gets posted to the website when it gets mailed. The meetings are shown, the Planning Board meetings and Board of Commissioners meetings are shown on the activities calendar for any given month. But notice of the cases themselves, I'm sure there's a simple way to do that. There is a representative under Paul Murray, the Assistant Account Manager, who could get that information in there in a timeframe. If we set it up, it could be almost automated to do it.
There's kind of a double benefit to it. One is that it puts it out in a, in a vehicle that most, a lot of people are familiar with. But the other benefit of some codification associated with it forces the county's hand in terms of the use of electronic notification processes and stuff like that. And so I was thinking, well, you know, you got a whole, you got a list of things that you're doing, you know, just add it or, you know.
We can, if you guys want to do that. We'll do it. I was presenting the, the general state statutory perspective from that planner guy, you know.
I understand.
But yeah, I mean, the Planning Board obviously has discretion about anything that might go in the ordinance to advise or make comment on to, that might go to the commissioners. And like I said, I think it's a, that's a fantastic idea to get it up on social media. I, for one, just from the experience that I have and given what you've discussed about the importance of social media and that kind of thing, we are, we still must advertise in a news, advertise in a newspaper of general circulation. Those advertisements do get included in the online versions of newspapers. But we all know that newspaper readership is falling off and continues to fall off and probably will for, for quite some time until almost all of them are sadly going to be gone. So looking at.
That's why you put your hat on. That's why you need to put your hat on, on what the real communication media is.
Yeah, I agree. I totally get the value of that. I had one other thought, but it's gone from my head now, sorry. It just went away. I apologize. But yeah, absolutely. If you guys want to put that in there, we can. If you want to make an official recommendation. Any other questions, comments? And again, like I said, if there's anything that you want to send me comment on via email about something specific in the ordinance, please do so. As long as I have it by, I'd say Thursday or Friday, I can, well, before Thursday. There's a committee meeting Thursday. So if I get those before Thursday, I can get those to the committee for review. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, so if I get the, if I get any comments. I haven't scheduled a time specifically. 10 o'clock seemed to work pretty well for most folks last time. So I'll probably leave it at 10 o'clock. And hopefully, Mr. Berger can make it to this one. Mr. Rexstraw's here, so now he knows it'll be at 10 o'clock. He's been very instrumental in all this, too.
Yes, and we're grateful to you, Charles.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to stop talking.
That being said, and it doesn't appear that there's any further discussion or questions, so we have a motion in front of us and seconded to recommend to the commissioners that we suggest they adopt what we have so far in the Unified Development Ordinance. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. There being no opposition. I will appear before the county commissioners' meeting on the 16th and make this recommendation in person. Now, the next item on our agenda. Lynn is going to update us in just a minute on the new Community Development Director. I want to update you all on some changes to the composition of the Planning Board. Mr. James Harris from Stoneville has termed out, which means he's served his second consecutive three-year term and is no longer eligible to sit on the Board. On the Commissioner's Consent Agenda will be an item requesting that he be appointed as an alternate. You should also know that Philip Stone has resigned from the Board due to repeated conflict of interests, being that he's in the real estate business. Dylan Moore and Cindy Hayworth are going to be advanced to full sitting members of the Planning Board. And James Harris will be the alternate. Those are the changes that we've requested on the consent agenda for the August 16 commissioners' hearing. Lynn, did you want to update us on the new Community Development Director?
Just some basic information. An offer has been made and accepted to someone to fill the Community Development Director position. He is currently the Town Manager of Mount Gilead in Montgomery County. His resume is extensive. He's got a long list of planning director, years of planning directorship experience along with town administration. Actually helped write part of NCGS 160D, the new development standard that's now in effect across the state. And interviewed quite well. So everybody's really excited and hoping for the best. His first day will be August 30th. That's it for now.
We have no whole business to discuss, so the Chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Moved.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The vote's unanimous. We are adjourned.